I can do the time to say things. I'll stay awake today.
Calling the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Kapadia?
Here.
Dr. Liliston?
Here.
Dr. Resnick?
Here.
Dr. Stilianno?
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Here.
Dr. Wilson?
Here.
You have a quorum?
Marvelous. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News and The Times on January 7, 2025. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on YouTube Bulldog TV and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping and our board minutes. With that said, please join me in the flag salute. I need a first and second to approve the minutes from the July 21 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, minutes are passed. Um, I do not have any comments at this time. Dr. Treese? Sounds great. Okay, we're gonna have a presentation. Yeah, you are. We're going to have a review of the NJ GPA presentation. Dr. Plissis?
Just waiting for the projector.
Hello?
I'm just checking.
Okay. Hello, welcome everyone. Today's presentation reviews the 2025 NJ GPA results for the Hopewell Valley Regional School District. We will look at overall performance, multi-year trends, subgroup analyses, and comparisons to state data. Our goal is to celebrate successes, identify areas for growth, and outline next steps for improvement. The NJ GPA was adopted by the NJ DOE in 2021 and is now a graduation requirement for the class of 2023 and beyond. Students must earn a passing score of 725. The test is administered to grade 11 and assesses proficiency in mathematics and English language arts, and this assessment plays a key role in determining readiness in graduation. For students who do not meet the NJ GPA benchmark, the state offers alternative pathways to meet the graduation requirement. These include achieving qualifying sources on approved standardized tests or completing a portfolio appeal process. These pathways provide multiple ways for students to demonstrate readiness while maintaining rigorous standards. This slide shows the percentage of grade 11 students who met or exceeded the NJ GPA passing threshold in ELA and math during the spring 2025 administration. This is our most current dataset and gives us a snapshot of student achievement for this graduating cohort. An overall 94% of students are graduation-ready in ELA and 86% in math. Here we focus again on the 24-25 academic year results in more detail. These numbers reflect district-wide proficiency rates in both content areas and help us identify strengths as well as subjects where we may need additional instructional support. This graph reiterates the passing rates noted in the previous slide. This multi-year comparison shows our district's NJ GPA performance from 2023 through 2025. Looking at the data over time allows us to identify patterns and determine whether interventions are having a sustained impact. Overall, our scores have remained strong with some fluctuations that reflect natural cohort variation. However, as compared to last year's test administration, there was an increase in readiness in both content areas. As you can see, I highlighted those in the red. This slide compares our district results to statewide performances. HVRSD students consistently outperform state averages in both ELA and math, which is a strong indicator of instructional effectiveness. We now shift to performance broken down by racial subgroups. This type of disaggregation is essential for understanding equity in outcomes and ensuring that all student populations are fully supported in achieving proficiency. Okay, so this chart displays ELA proficiency rates by racial subgroups for the spring 2025 administration. While the district's overall performance is strong, the small number of black and brown students means that percentage changes can appear large from year to year and may not fully represent trends over time. However, even with small sample sizes, the data is an important indicator of equity and access. These results prompt us to reflect on whether instructional practices, curriculum materials, and supports are meeting the needs of all racial groups. Our goal is to ensure that every student, regardless of background, has the resources, encouragement, and opportunities needed to achieve at high levels. This chart presents the math proficiency rates by racial subgroup for the spring 2025 administration. As with the ELA, the small population in black and brown students means that results can shift noticeably from year to year, so we interpret these percentages with caution. Even so, the data is a valuable lens for examining equity in mathematics achievement, encourages us to consider whether all students have equitable access to rigorous math instruction, enrichment opportunities, and targeted supports. By maintaining close attention to these results, we can identify and address any barriers to success and ensure that high expectation and strong outcomes are achievable for every student. This slide brings together three years of ELA and math results by racial subgroup. Tracking this data over time helps us see whether performance gaps are closing, remaining consistent, or widening. While our district maintains strong overall proficiency, not all subgroups have experienced equal growth. This emphasis emphasizes the need for sustained targeted efforts that go beyond year-to-year fluctuations and focus on long-term equity and achievement. However, it is important to note that overall there was an increase in performance in each racial group over the last two to three years, which is highlighted in the red box. Next, we look at performance by gender. This lens helps us understand how male and female students are performing relative to one another and whether there are any consistent trends that require instructional adjustments. Disaggregating by gender allows us to ensure that instructional strategies are meeting the needs of all learners. In ELA, both male and female students in our district outperform the state average. However, a slight performance gap exists with female students scoring higher on average. While the gap is smaller than state trends, we still want to ensure that all students are developing strong literacy skills, particularly in writing and critical reading, to meet college and career readiness expectations. Math results show that both genders perform above the state average, but there is a performance difference with male students slightly outperforming female students. While the gap is not large, it points to the importance of continuing to encourage female participation in advanced math pathways and providing all students with opportunities to engage in problem-solving and analytical reasoning. Looking at gender performance over the past three years provides a better sense of whether these differences are persistent or changing. Although both groups consistently perform well, small but steady differences remain. Ongoing attention to instructional practices and student engagement strategies will be important to ensure both genders have equal opportunities to excel. Okay, and then finally, this section examines results based on program participation such as special education and economically disadvantaged students. Program-based analysis is critical for ensuring we are meeting the needs of all students, especially those who may face additional academic challenges. In ELA, students in certain programs such as special education perform below the district average. While these gaps are not unique to our district, they highlight the importance of differentiated instruction, targeted intervention, and access to high-quality literacy resources. Our goal is to ensure that program participation does not predict lower academic outcomes. We will continue to work with people services in addressing these gaps. Math performance by program group follows a similar pattern to ELA with certain subgroups scoring lower than the overall district average. This reinforces the need for ongoing support in foundational math skills as well as access to higher-order problem-solving experiences. Collaboration between content teachers and program staff will be essential in closing these gaps. And when we examine program-based subgroup's performance over three years, we can see whether interventions are making a sustained difference. While some improvement is visible, achievement gaps remain for certain groups. This points to the need for consistent multi-year strategies that focus on both academic support and student engagement. Highlighted in the red box, there was overall growth in program areas over the last three years. For example, special education increased to 60% as compared to 37% in 2024. So in summary, HVRSD continues to perform above the state average in both ELA and math, which is a significant accomplishment. However, disaggregated data reveals that performance gaps persist across some racial, gender, and program-based subgroups. Okay, so our key takeaways are that district performance is strong, multi-year trends are stable or improving, and subgroup data highlights areas for targeted action. Next steps include expanding support for underrepresented and lower-performing subgroups, deepening culturally responsive practices, using data to guide instructional planning, and monitoring longitudinal growth to ensure our efforts are making a lasting impact. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I have a bunch of comments and questions. So first of all, thank you for the presentation. Glad to see where kind of going deeper into the data and stuff. I guess I'm gonna start out with, I mean, big picture, this is good news. The one thing I would caution with is this is the first year of good news, and I tend to not believe in one year data marks until they're consistent. So I'm hoping to see, you know, big picture of those numbers remain where they are and perhaps even go up on the math side, and then the more specific detailed areas where we're lagging, right? So I'll start celebrating in two years if we see this, if we see the whole three-year kind of hold there. Next one I had, so this is for 11th grade. So when the state says graduation-ready, does that mean on track for graduation given that the students are in 11th grade? Or does it mean, hey, they've already met the minimum to be able to graduate even though they still have a year of high school to go?
The latter. So they-
It means the latter. So presumably, where we still have gaps, right, there's still a year that those students have an assist-
Correct.
So I, I think that's a good point.
And if I can just add, Dr. Resnick, some students will, may never achieve that, right? You have students that have learning disabilities or their level is just that they may never- There is a portfolio option for those students to also meet graduation, but they have to do the portfolio or they have to pass the test in addition to accumulating the credits that they're required to graduate.
So my third question was, I'll get to the most difficult one at the end, but my third question was, is looking at the data. And when you look at, when you look at graphs, at the detailed graphs, the total number of students is always double for the total as compared to either ELA or math.
They combined them. So it was like the all, like in some of those graphs or charts, you can see it says like all results, so it's showing the percentage for both. Yep.
Yeah, so the actual number of students is not, it's, it's the, it's the lower of the two, right? It's not the double.
Correct. It's like 275.
Right, I think where that, the reason I saw that and where that becomes important is when you look at the performance for black and Hispanic students, for example, for 2024 on the subject test, it's an A.
Okay.
Because there's too few of them. But then when you go to the combine, you actually state the number because now whoever is doing the statistics said, oh, there were enough students. That's actually not true. So you guys need to be careful.
So that, let me just clarify that that is a state mandate requirement. So if we have less than 10 students in certain populations, we cannot report the data on that.
And that makes sense to me, right? What I'm saying is then you go down to the total and it's, and because you're doubling, it becomes more than 10, and now you're reporting something. But the statistics still don't make sense because it's actually less than 10 students.
Right, for individual tests, correct.
Yeah. So, so just be careful with those. Last one I was gonna make is, I'd like to see us do a deeper dive into what's going on. I know it's very few black and Hispanic kids, so it could just be a fluke where one or two kids are not performing well or maybe they're special ed. But I'd like us to see, I'd like to see us do a deeper dive as to the actual reasons I saw at the next steps. One of the next steps is enhancing culturally responsive practices, right? I mean, that's generally a good idea, but I'm kind of guessing that, hey, you're taking, I guess that this may be a reason why black and Hispanic students are underperforming, and it's a reasonable guess. But it's just a guess. You haven't actually gone down and, or at least you haven't presented us with anything that says that that's actually that, right? So before we start saying, hey, here's, here are the actions that we're gonna take to try and address it, let's actually try and take a look at it, especially since we have so few kids and understand what those gaps are.
And we did talk about that at ed program on Thursday about-
Okay.
Similar to what you were suggesting.
So that's it.
Thank you.
I'm sort of adding to Dr. Resnick's concern. I was just wondering, have you looked at any of these social, emotional, cultural stuff that can, has shown to be, have a big effect on students' learning? Haven't done anything.
So no, this is just purely based on just the numbers. Yeah.
So I guess you have an action to come back at some point a few months down the road and talk to us about what you've looked into and-
Yeah, I can add it to ed program. Sure.
I just want to say, so last year when we saw this data, I had raised some of those similar concerns that we talked about. So it is good to see, you know, just a general trend across the board. And obviously, like we've mentioned, one year is could be one off. I'm curious for some of the populations we're looking at, the special ed population went from 37% to 60% graduation-ready. And then obviously, the significant increases in the black and Hispanic student graduation-ready percentages. Do you feel like those are results of any specific interventions that we've introduced in the last year, or do you think it's year-over-year variation?
Well, I'd like to speak a little bit to that. I do believe that it's some interventions that we've done. One, I don't believe that the scores that we had over the last two years were the true performance of most of our kids. We talked about sort of the playing that happens on this exam because you see kids not ready to graduate and then our AP and SAT scores are very high. One of the interventions is students are aware now that if they don't or they are not successful on this exam, they will have to, they will be registered for the support court. Now, everyone doesn't need that support court some well, right? So I think people paid a little bit more attention and took the test. So that's the first year of getting that out of the way. Also, Principal Riley and her staff worked very hard on focusing on test scores. She spent many of her department meetings talking about the scores, looking at cohorts of students, and putting supports in place with their title monies to support those students. She's also proposed some of that same thing this year. So this, this growth is not magical. It has been targeted effort by her, talking about the scores with her teachers and then working together in PLC to actually improve the performance of our students. So I'm gonna applaud my teachers this year for their growth because I know they've worked very hard on it and that will continue.
And may I just say, so when we get the data from like the NJ SLA, we can actually break it down by content and standards, so we can identify what areas we need to work on. When we receive the data from NJ GPA, we don't receive that.
No. So it's a little tougher.
Yeah.
But you know, so you're kind of coaching everything, but it's also back to that cultural competence piece. It's about teaching kids how to take a test, too. When you sit for a test, I was known for getting my kids to pass the test in the urban city. All my kids always passed. And some of it was if you're looking at a catamaran and you've never seen one and you have to write something, you have to generate a story on a catamaran and you don't know what you're looking at. Those sorts of things are cultural things that they run into in a test, right? Language, when you're dealing with somebody that's a multilingual learner and there's localisms and things like that in something, right? So you have to work on how to teach kids to be strategic on how to test, right? And so I think that they've done some of that work as well, but this has been effort that is targeted on trying to improve this without the standards that the kids actually miss. That's the hard part.
One of the other things that we talked about in EdCom, too, was trying to look at the number of years some of these students have been with us in the district and whether some of the folks are coming, kiddos, shouldn't say folks, but coming to us later in their academic career and that we need to put some interventions in place if they're, you know, coming to us in ninth grade, for example.
Because you can't do it if you've never experienced-
So if you only had, right, so if you only had three years with us in the district, there may be things that we can make sure we put into, check in, make sure they're caught up and actually ready, so.
And math is always harder to scaffold than language arts. So, you know, I'm excited about our new supervisor who is a content area specialist in math specifically. So we're hoping to be able to get some strong protocols in place for how do you help students that need to fill the gap with math.
A quick follow-up question, kind of also piggybacking off of what Mr. Resnick said. What are some of the targeted support for underrepresented students? What does that look like? And moving forward and as well as enhancing culturally responsive practices? Like what is that actually gonna look like in terms of what our students will be seeing?
Well, I think it all goes back to differentiation in the classroom. So it's not, it's not per se like we're taking certain populations out of the classroom. It's more about meeting the students where they're at within the classroom. And then about being more culturally responsive in our practices, it's exactly what Rosetta said. You know, you can't ask somebody to talk about like how snow happens if they've never experienced snow. So making sure that in our language that we are providing examples and that, and supports that are relatable and have students have background knowledge on. That's one way. Yeah.
And did you find a gap between students that had been in the district since they were in kindergarten and first grade versus kids-
We just talked about this on Thursday. So that we just, so like to Alex's point, we just have to do a deeper dive into those students. Yep. Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that because I think we had a really great discussion about this during our ed program meeting that, like Dr. Resnick said, you know, I want to see it for a couple of years and approach it with some skepticism, but I think what was really helpful about looking at the trend data is we are still seeing disparities. We want to address those disparities. I think we all acknowledged it and we wanted to lift it up in this presentation. And I do think there's a good news story here because as Mr. Kapadia said, right, we are also seeing large increases within those groups, even though they are seeing lower scores, right? So I think, you know, hopefully it's one of those continue the good work type of things and we can continue to see those increase over time.
Thank you. Okay, next report. Moving on to our, we'll have public comment, we'll have two public comment opportunities. Yeah. No, not right now. Thank you.
Okay, tonight, we do have our, the board has to decide whether or not we're gonna move forward with the proposal of the business administrator, the superintendent, and the Finance and Facilities Committee, which is go to the community to ask for a bond referendum. I know that we've discussed this over time over the, you know, past year, but before we pose this question to you officially for tonight so that we can move forward in November if you all are in agreement, we just wanted to make sure we reviewed the questions that will be on the bond referendum should you agree that we move forward with that after tonight. So the agenda for tonight is I'm gonna share the potential projects, the priorities, and the potential questions that we have, the timeline for updates, and the cost summary, which will be the impact to the community, what the tax impact, estimated impact will be for the community. Our architects are here if you have any real deep, you know, you know, in the weeds, infrastructure questions, that's their lane. I taught language arts, that's not mine, but I can, but I, we have them here and we also have Bob here to talk about the numbers if you want to dig into that. So first, we're gonna talk about the potential project and the priorities and how we have proposed to pose the questions to the community. So based on our conversation from our ask in last September that was unsuccessful, we really went around to the community and said, okay, what was it that was a sticking point for you for the questions that we asked? And what, what do you see as a need knowing what's going on in our buildings? Most of the folks that we spoke to were our parents, but we did speak to people in the community that were not people that currently have students in our school district or may not have. So based on that feedback, we removed the accessible bathroom slash concession stand from the field at the high school and the proposed synthetic turf field that was supposed to go in behind Timber Lane that would be available for some sports to use. Those things have been removed. We've added projects because of things have become emergent since then as we have old buildings, so things always come up. So we've additional classroom space and other HVAC improvements have been added to Bear Tavern based on some of the growth we're seeing in Hopewell Elementary and Tollgate. We've added steam boiler replacement that we need at Tollgate and renovations to Tollgate to relocate the nurses suite. They don't have a bathroom there. And also new group areas and PE office with a toilet for the children because right now there's enough space for any of that in Tollgate. Escalation is based on inflation. We're all experiencing that, so things cost more now than they did back in September when we proposed these projects. So the first question will contain everything that has to do with building integrity, things that we're worried about that if they fail, there will be a catastrophic failure that will cause me to either close schools or interrupt student learning. So these things include roofing, replacement of some doors inside the building for security and fire purposes, retarded purposes, upgrades outside of Timber Lane, Bear Tavern at the staff entrance, HVAC systems, you know, the floor in the Timber Lane is in a disrepair and needs to be fixed. And we have a lot of people that use it, not just our students, but community members use it for recs, interior renovations in Bear Tavern, toilet renovations in Timber Lane, Bear Tavern, Hopewell Elementary, repaving, specifically the solar lots over at the high school, also some at Tollgate, and dealing with the drainage problem at Stony Brook that doesn't always stay outside of the building that ends up coming inside the building are things that we need to fix. The second question will be the expansions as a result of some of the growth we're seeing and also to bring our youngest, most vulnerable students back in the building. We have preschool and special needs classes going on outside. This year, moving forward, it is now code that we can no longer have preschool outside the building, so they need to come in, but I don't feel comfortable with any of my kids outside of the building. So these, based on the conversations we've had with the community, we're putting in as a second question, that's the expansion of Bear Tavern, which will include kid rooms that will be ready to receive pre-k or kindergarten. Any grade can go in those classrooms, though. I know folks are asking, why are there bathrooms in classes? Why do they have this luxury? It's because a preschool and a kindergarten class has to have a bathroom and I'd rather have every class being able to receive every grade level that I can deal with it rather than not having enough classroom for kindergarten. The students will come as families- The students will come as families move in and we've already seen growth in enrollment in those areas. The addition on Tollgate will also be the same. The classrooms that we add there, the six classrooms, will be able to receive all grade levels. So we'll make sure that we cover the bathroom and the sink requirement for kindergarten and preschool, but they can receive any grade level moving forward based on the needs of students. So I was just going to go through this quickly because I know there's some misinformation about the roofing. The roofs that we're going to be, that we're proposing to be replaced are at the end of their useful life and they were not replaced in the last referendum. I know it's out in the media that some of them are still under warranty, meaning the warranty expires in a few months. I don't know if you've ever tried to use a warranty in your house when something, just recently, my water heater was repaired. Yes, it was under warranty. Yes, the repairman fixed it. And he also told me that if I don't fix it and replace it soon, I'm not going to have air conditioning, hot water. And the same with my air conditioner. You just had to replace it even though it hadn't gone the 15 years it was supposed to go. It's not fixable, so they're just patching it. What we've been doing with these roofs under that warranty is patching them, but that's not solving the problem and it's raining inside the building and it's causing damage to things inside the building. There's bold risks, there's all kinds of risks here, and the warranty will not cover these anymore. So these have to be replaced. Those are the roofs that we're talking about here on the building.
It's important to note that warranties cover defect in material construction as it was built. It doesn't cover normal wear and tear and these roofs are 20, 25 years old. Warranties aren't going to cover those kind of.
And nor is it going to replace the whole thing.
Well, the other important thing to note about roof warranties and like, for example, cover, they are paraded. If you have a 25-year roof warranty and you have a year left in it, only 4% of that roof is covered, 96% of it is no longer covered.
Right. And that's when you get patched, right? So that's not working.
Well, so essentially it's under warranty, but it's not.
That's right. That's right. So they're not, we're not replacing that, right? So the HVAC system in the 400 wing, very old, toilet renovation there, and then repaving the solar lot we've already talked about.
Just to point out that those HVAC systems are the original systems that were put in in 1995.
So they really don't lose anything at this point.
They've outlived their useful time.
Okay. So Timber Lane, this front entrance has tripping hazards on it, but there's no cover here. I know that looks like cover, but all the tops have blown off of that and we can't put them back. It's not code anymore. That front piece needs to come off. So that whole front has been on several proposals to be redone. It was on the last referendum, we pulled it off. It really has to be addressed now to make sure that we have a safe entrance for our students, including, you know, the doors coming in. Other things that need to happen is that the gym, Ox Gym is the only gym in our district that doesn't have an air conditioner still. And it is used by our students and folks outside the district. Come and rent that space. HVAC renovations that we didn't get on the last referendum are in here as well as the replacement of the chiller to allow proper cooling now that we've been enjoying warmer temperatures. We really have to, we're not able to cool our buildings with the chiller that's there. It's outlived its life as well. And then some improvements to the gym beyond that to replace the floor and then area for a bathroom renovation in that area.
And again, another, on my superintendent to-do list was the additional well that's going to be installed at Timber Lane to avoid what happened, I guess, two years ago now when the well pump failed at Timber Lane and we had to go through a chaos mode there to get kids fed and through the day without water. This is going to be a secondary well that's going to provide water in the case of the first well failure.
Thank you. I did jump over that well. So if you weren't aware, our middle school had, it's on a well and so is Bear Tavern system. And the pump failed during the school day and we had no water, the tank empty. We were able to limp through the rest of the day. We had a delayed opening the next day. We found a part, at first it was going to be indefinitely. We didn't know when we were going to get a part. And we were able to find one laying somewhere way off in Pennsylvania. They brought it. We had some trouble getting it out, so the kids came to school on the delayed opening. There was no water in the building. We had to evacuate to the high school. They got to spend the day in the high school. It was a good time. And then we were able to finally replace it. But we shouldn't be in that situation where there's no backup well where that can happen. So that's one of the things that we've added to the referendum as a result of that happening. And this happened while we were in the course of the last one. So when folks look at the price and they say, well, it was 87 and why is it 84? That's because projects have presented themselves since then. And so that's why that has made it to the list now.
The other question that's come up regarding an additional well is why don't we just connect the city water? That's another issue for a different day, but we are not, have not been invited to join into the public water system, which would come from Pennington Borough. It's not in the cards right now.
Case for Bear Tavern, there's some infrastructure things that need to happen to the front of the building. They have some failing storefront, sewer pump station renovation, the walkway covering. They also have that same problem where they don't have cover coming in. They have a groundwater issue coming into the music room. The HVAC replacement needs to come there as well, replacement of doors in the A through D pod to bring them up to code so that we have, you know, the security and fire doors that are up to this modern state. Cafeteria and other miscellaneous renovations are also part of this. And then the bathroom innovation near the gym. And this also had a sister pump as well in this renovation. Also, the final proposed things here, again, we have roofing, deteriorating exterior doors, critical building infrastructure systems, primary HVAC systems, replacement of interior classroom doors in the primary wing, and then enlarging the two kindergarten bathrooms so that they're ADA accessible here for Hopewell Elementary. And then Stony Brook, which is our newest school, but it's still, you know, 25 years old, roofing and flashing replacement to correct drainage issues they're having there, replacing the cafeteria, RTUs, I'm sorry, rooftop humans, thank you, the air condition, installing the new cooling tower because this has a geothermal system. It's not cooling as it used to be. We're going to need to dig new wells so that we can cool the building because it's, again, it's a very old system now. And then, again, here are the roof areas that are expired, warranty expired in 2022. They need to be replaced, these roofs.
The original roofs that were, Stony Brook's original roofs that are now needing to be replaced.
And then finally here, we have Tollgate. Tollgate has roofing and deteriorating outside doors as well, third floor HVAC upgrade, replacing the electrical switch yard, and then also the driveway improvements in the front loop. As we get rid of the trailers on the side, we're going to make room so that the first responders can have access all the way around the building. Yes, it will also improve the parking situation, but the first responders have complained to us over the years about that issue of having those modules on the side and not being able to get all the way around the building in the case of an emergency.
And in the case of Tollgate, this HVAC work we're doing is going to enable that building to switch from steam to hot water. And that's going to be a lot more efficient and it's not going to have some rooms at the front end of the loop being incredibly hot and rooms at the end of the loop being cold. So this is going to standardize the comfort for everybody in that building.
And also it should improve our energy costs, right? Because when you have these outmoded systems and air condition and heating systems, it costs us to use more energy and it drives up the bill.
Sorry about, but I have to chime in because it mind boggles me every time I'm reminded you skipped over the replaced electrical switch here. The only way to shut off electrical service with Tollgate is to call PSCNG, have them climb up a pole and disconnect the wire there.
Yes.
As incredibly safe because that whole setup is about 100 years old.
It will be 100 years old this year. Everything's 100, this building, that building, and Hopewell Elementary. Okay. So question two are expansions. This is Bear Tavern. That's adding the 10 classrooms, including the replacement of one classroom for small group instruction for that, expand that space to create spaces for our child study team and speech and others for students to be inside the building. We are going to keep the buildings that are currently outside of Bear Tavern. We've put a lot of money of them. They are still usable for office space and storage and that sort of thing, but all of our students will be brought into the building for us to be able to have those meetings with students and have them have, receive that small group instruction that they need within the building. I wanted to just talk quickly about this 16.1 that has been promised to us by the township. We cannot take that off of our question, but when that money comes through, if that money comes through based on how successful they are with the lawsuit, that money that they would give to the district would go to relieving the debt on this portion of the bond if it passes. Not the whole thing, it'll just be on the 16.1 that is the addition for Bear Tavern. So Bob, did you want to talk to this picture?
Well, this is just showing the location of the four trailers that are at Bear Tavern right now in the red, and we'll be moving those, not, those will stay as Dr. Tree said, but we'll be moving, the addition will be in the blue area to the far right in the back of the building. Obviously, we'll be pushing out the current playground, we'll be pushed back, and there'll be, you know, a similar outdoor play surface for students to play on out there. Again, we're keeping those four buildings because they are viable buildings, not, you know, as much for students, but we do need additional meeting space for Bear Tavern and also district-wide, we could have, you know, teacher leader meetings there or other small group meetings there as well as there's a need for storage for those buildings. So, you know, we're going to keep those in play.
And then the Tollgate addition is the other one that's on the question. So this is the addition that we'll be adding on to Bear Tavern, the sixth classroom, including replacing one room. Did you have a question? Okay. Relocating the faculty and staff room, extra space may vary in the final program or plan, but that's what we're proposing. A conference room, right now they don't even have a conference room. They meet in the principal's, our very small office, and a toilet room for staff because they don't currently have that. Additional parking, once they remove the modules here, we will pay to have those removed so then we can access that building all the way around. There is an outside learning space that we will also have to relocate. That's not in here, but we plan monies for that.
And again, an overhead shot, that area in red is the area where the kindergarten trailers are and another outbuilding that are there that will be removed. There'll be some front end parking there as well as a loop that will connect the building on all sides. This was highly suggested by our first responders. And again, the similar construction to what is at Bear Tavern. You'll have that new wing in the back with the hard surface play area pushed back into the grassy area.
Okay. So question two. Further questions for here?
Again, yeah, so some additional space. This was critical to the request in that building that there was no real storage space for the phys ed instructor and no additional student bathroom. In addition to please for years for a proper nurses suite to be located at Tollgate. So you'll have there, that green space will be your new nurses space with student toilet areas. Again, a larger space and a phys ed office with, again, student bathrooms in there as well next to the gym to alleviate some of the stress of having to use her office for storage space.
Right. And this has been a problem at Tollgate. This is the only school that's suffering from this. Having a nurse's office in a PE office with no bathroom for students is really, that's not at all where we should be in this modern day. You definitely need those two things. So this is part of that expansion that came out of some of our conversations as we went through the court with our community.
And again, it provides much more, much needed space to Tollgate. Tollgate is, you know, one of our older buildings and the fact that there is no viable conference room there, this is going to free up some additional space for not only meeting but for student instruction.
Thank you. Okay. So we're going to go through quickly the timeline. We finalized the list of projects and the conversations that happened with finalizing that list of projects was finance and facility really, really talking to us and our facility as the maintenance crew, saying what projects are critical, which ones we absolutely need to do or we're going to be facing serious situations in our school. So that's how we identified these projects for the list. The vote has been submitted to the NJGEOE and has been accepted, so we've completed that. They're working on approvals for the questions. That's underway as is educating the community. That will be ongoing up until the day that we conduct the vote if we agree today on November 4th. Deciding on the final referendum project, again, has been completed. That was done in February. Prep time and revising the applications was completed in March. We've submitted all these projects in April. The project review and receiving the preliminary cost letters, all of that happened back in July. The board accepted the letters and approved to the form of the questions. That's where we are today. Hopefully, we'll get there today and then if we do, on August 20th, we'll notify the clerk of elections and they will form the questions for us so that we can go to vote November 4th. Hey, Bob's going to talk about the cost summary.
We've kind of broken this down for you in question one and question two. Question one is right around $58 million, of which 34% of that will be covered by the state and the local share will be 66% at this point. So we are getting about one-third of the cost covered by the state. Similarly, question number two are expansions. As we have noted before, most of this is not covered by state funds. This is, for new construction, and this is hard to understand, for new construction to be covered by the state, you must have what's called unhoused students. And it's a state formula and they determine how that works and they count all spaces in a building and not necessarily spaces that we would normally have for instruction. So we do have some unhoused students, but not enough to make a difference for additional construction at this time. Will it be going down the road? Possibly, but based upon those formulas, we don't qualify. We did get some money for drainage as we add to those spaces and the drainage work is covered by state funds. So combining the two questions, we are around $84 million, of which 23, 24% will be covered by the state, 75% again to the local district.
Just a quick question. If you could go back one more slide.
One more?
Nope, sorry. There you go. So the $20 million, that would be the state share if the referendum was passed.
Correct.
If we do not go to referendum and we attempt to pay out of budget, what does that look like for that state share?
Zero. 0.0.
But the other district, you do pass referendum, you access that fund, right? So when Princeton passed, when Lawrence passed, they're able to access that up to 40%. You won't always get 40%, right? But that up to 40% is accessed by all the other folks that our taxpayers are paying into also. So you can't, the only way you can access it is if you use the referendum.
And the way we get it, and I've had folks ask me this too, why do we have to bond the whole amount when the state's going to give us 20 million? Well, the state's going to give you 20 million over 20 years. What they do is they give you a portion of the debt service. So instead of, let's say our debt service payment for the, for next year is $2 million, the state would give us 500,000. I'm just making those numbers up. That's how they do it. They pay the debt so they don't give you the money upfront. So this is the, I guess, folks, what they're most concerned about. If question one were to pass, it would mean $284 for the average household in Hopewell Township, $248 for Hopewell Borough, and $294 in Pennington Borough. If they both pass without considering pilot money, you'd have a $471 impact to Hopewell Township, a 411 impact in Hopewell Borough, and a $489 impact to Pennington Borough. And again, this is assuming a 20-year bond at 4.25% interest. The numbers are good by the year. As ratables change, as money falls into the, onto the tax base, falls off the tax base, as the percent shares change, those numbers may shift. It also doesn't take into the account, interest rates are high right now. Should they go down, we also have the opportunity to refinance. And actually, by law, we are required to refinance when savings hit 3%. And we've done it in the past. The only reason we haven't refinanced the bonds that we currently are paying on is because the interest rate was so low when we bought them, we, you know, rates haven't dropped any lower. So again, we will look to refinance these as market conditions change. Now, with pilot funds, each of the municipalities would see a $118 decrease. Now, with pilot funds, each of the municipalities would see $118 decrease, $103 dollar impact negative, and $124 decrease, if we were to get that $16.1 million from the township. Folks have asked, what if you get the money from the township, the $16.1 million, can't you just use that to do more things? No, we can't. The money would be, the agreement that we would make with the township would be, that money would be used to pay down the debt. All right, another question I received, is it only going to Hopewell Township? No, it would go to relieve the taxes of all three municipalities, that would be something that we would insist upon, upon receiving any money like that. As Dr. Tree said, we will be fighting to make sure that that promise is kept, and that we can apply these dollars towards the local taxpayers' debt.
And we're also having conversations beyond that $16.1, it's not just stopping there. I wish that we were having conversations beyond that, but we are continuing to talk to the township, and they're continuing to try to work through the legal situation with Pennington Borough.
We've had, you know, again, and maybe our board members who have been in those meetings want to chime in, but we have, the discussions have been very open and honest, and we believe that they are in earnest in wanting to help with that addition to Bear Tavern. But we do believe that we are going to be getting this money, they are stuck in a legal situation right now that we can't, that they can't seem to extricate themselves from at this point.
So I think I failed to say, question one must pass for question two to pass. And the reason why we put this in two different questions is not because I don't feel like the additions aren't important at Bear Tavern and Tollgate. I think that they're all important enough to be one question, but we heard the community loud and clear, we're putting the questions to you after this move forward pass tonight. Those are the two different tax impacts, whether we just go with the infrastructure pieces and not go with the expansions, or we go with both. We wanted to give you all of those options for you to make a decision as the community.
You know, you know, as a committee, Finance Facilities Committee, and as the board as a whole, we understand the impact to the taxpayers. It is a large number, we know that. We have done the best we could in trying to address high-level repairs and replacements of major, critical infrastructure, the cost simply is too, is too great to handle in our regular budget. Everything has gone up post-COVID, everything from school supplies to health benefits, if you've seen a report in the paper recently about the state health benefits program, it's going up 30% next year, 30%. Those kind of costs are not able to be absorbed in a 2% cap. That's why we are where we are. If we could handle more of this within our general fund budget without impacting all of the folks' jobs to the right of me here, we would do that. It just is not possible now to continue funding critical infrastructure from within the general fund budget. And not, not to beat a dead horse with this, but the state wants you to go to referendum, because they want to give you the money that they've taxed you already for. The state wants you to go to referendum, the only way to get the money is through a referendum. So that's why we are where we are today. A final summary where this is, you know, the categories of projects where they're going through. All critical to keeping our space open, safe, and comfortable for our staff, students, and the community.
And not to drastically affect programming, because not only if we don't do this, we still are going to be chasing these projects, and at some point, I'm going to have to affect programs drastically to keep my buildings open. I don't want to have to do that, because these are things that are fixable, we have to be strategic about, and a referendum is a way for a district to be strategic and recoup as much money as they can from the state system, because you all get so little of it as it is. You really do, we get so little state funding, and then you're leaving this opportunity on the table for some critical things that you need to fix. For a district that really draws a lot of people here, people come here for the great district that you have here, you have to preserve your investment, and so that's why we're coming to you. This is a lot to manage, it's a big ask for the community, but it really is paying and supporting your asset that you have in this school district and your community. So I think that, do we have just any questions from the board?
So I have a comment, pretty important one, and then I have a statement that a board member who is not able to be here, our Finance and Facilities Chair has asked me to read. So you're going to have to settle into your comfortable chairs for that, but before we do that, Bob, this is the comment, and go all the way to the beginning, to projects that were taken out. So there's an important category of projects removed that's missing here, right? You've listed the projects that were removed, which we're simply not going to attempt to. There were also projects in the last referendum, which we have, they became so urgent, we completed them out of the capital improvement, and, and, right, and got replaced by other emergent projects, right? But I think, Baba, I'd like to ask you, because the slide deck is going to be referred to by the community, let's add the list of projects that are removed, because we had to just deal with them out of our regular budget and capital improvements in here, and it's a couple of million dollars in projects, if I remember correctly. Now with that, if you all don't mind, or maybe I should do this, see if any other board members have questions or comments, and then I'll read Mark's statement that he wanted me to read in.
I think I just wanted to emphasize a point that Dr. Tree made at the end there, which is, we do not take this lightly. We have been going through this project list sort of ad nauseam, one by one, for several years now, right? And I think everybody on the Finance and Facilities Committee truly believes that these are projects that we absolutely have to take on as a district. And just to say that these are projects that we are going to have to take on under question one, whether the referendum passes or not. But when we take them on, if it does not pass, it's going to be at higher cost for the taxpayer, it's going to result in more interruptions to student learning, and the money is going to come from teacher salaries, cutting positions, and cutting programs. So that's the situation we're in right now. So I just wanted to be totally honest with everybody about where we are, and what it means if this does not pass.
Anyone else have a question or comment? Okay, proceed.
All right, so this is from Mark Peters, who's a fellow board member and the Chair of the Finance and Facilities Committee. He really, I know that he really tried hard to be here today, and he has a very valid excuse, so he asked me to read the statement in. Fellow board members and community members, it is with great disappointment that I'm not there to be in person tonight, in what is the first of many important meetings surrounding the future of how we as a community work collaboratively to address the ongoing fiscal challenges we face. Three years ago, when I ran for the board, I did so with the desire to better understand the financial challenges a regional district faces in New Jersey. I could not have expected what I learned during that time. My surprise was not because of past boards or administrations' decision-making as much as it is with the overall challenges that nearly all districts are facing in New Jersey. Simply put, capital projects are nearly impossible to budget for, given the current constraints of how administrations are told to budget by Trenton. Tonight's vote on how we will phrase the questions for the referendum came with important tireless conversations internally as a board, to ensure we're being as responsible as we can in order to meet the needs of our community today. Many board members, myself included, have spent many hours speaking to the community to address questions, correct false statements made by others in the community, and most important, to listen to our constituents. My hope as Chair of the Finance Committee is that we move forward with the questions as they're phrased, in order to maximize our transparency with the community and work towards November to secure long-term stability for our district with capital projects. While we still have much work to do with finalizing commitments from Hopewell Township and the money promised now by way of pilot, we continue to operate in our decision-making to be as fiscally responsible as possible for our community and our constituents. We are appreciative of the continued dialogue around the community and continue to welcome it as we approach November. Thank you for those folks in the community that have questions, I am sure Mark will be happy to answer them to the extent that he can, he obviously cannot speak on behalf of the board, but, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Resnick, for helping Mark out with his message. And just to talk to Mr. Colavita here, I think we're going to go ahead and take public comment and then vote. So for those who may be new to a meet, our meeting, we have, like I mentioned, two public We'll take public comment on any matter that's previously been spoken about or at will. So the members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting, and you're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting, so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking, and that is at the deus. This will assist us with our record-keeping. Would you like to provide any direction on timekeeping?
Sure, so I am the timekeeper. As Ms. Williams Galliano said, you'll have three minutes, I think when there's 30 seconds left, I will lift up the yellow sign, and when your time is up, I will switch it to red.
Awesome, with that, public comment is now open.
After hearing the discussion about the NJGPA presentation, I feel compelled to speak about this year's results. First, I have a question. On the final slide where results are broken down by ELL, Free and Reduced Lunch, 504 Plans, IEPs, and GenEd subgroups, where did you place the results of students who may be categorized in multiple groups? I am a parent of a student who was a junior this past school year. I engaged in many conversations and discussions with other parents of junior students as the time of testing approached. While I applaud the staff for their interventions they implemented, I truly have to commend the students. The message which was conveyed to the students was, and I quote, "You need to pass NJGPA to graduate." This message was received by a large chunk of the student body, and the messaging increased angst, anxiety, and overwhelmed many students in the junior class. In addition, the time of the testing marched during third marking period, and the stress which students took on coincided with many juniors completing their college essay, or as I like to title it, post-secondary essay, as we have students who do not attend college for one reason or another. The way the message was shared with students was upsetting to me, because I knew that this test was not the only path to graduation. I would ask that moving forward, the messaging be more transparent, I would attribute the increase in success, and by success, I will only say the rise in numbers, when simultaneously the mental health of students took a hit, to interventions implemented, but also to students perseverating on the need to pass and the threat of not graduating. It would also be helpful to be certain testing is not scheduled directly after daylight savings, as was this year. While the NJGPA may be the first pathway, it is important to be transparent and educate our students that there are other possible measures to attain graduation.
Anyway, my name is Ray Nichols, I live at 412 Federal City Road in Hopewell Township, and both of my daughters went to Tollgate, graduated from the high school, and now have PhDs and are working as educators in colleges. So that was, I'm sure, before almost any of you were involved with education in this township, I'm not sure about Mr. Colavita. Anyway, I don't think I've been at a board meeting since one of my daughters got some kind of recognition way back. Anyway, my wife and I have lived here, and having both been retired, we've decided we like this community enough, we're planning to stay as long as we can, and we are strong supporters of education. My girls went the way they did because of teachers in the high school. Before I get into talking about the bonds proposals, which is the only reason I came for, I do want to comment on the presentation about special testing, and percentages are nice to see. However, when it comes to small subsets of the general population, it would be nice to know just how many people we're looking at, talking about. I was recognizing the importance of not freaking out less than 10 students, but if it's 11 students, each time there's a percentage change, it's 9%. If there's 20 students, it's 5%, et cetera. So I think it's important, the bottom of each of those bar graphs, to put N equals, real simple. Likewise, with the comparison among years, using a table, it's difficult to follow. A graph that showed over time would be much easier to show and to present changes over time, which is the point of providing that data. All right, back to the bond issue. I see some sense in having been two bond questions, thank you, real quick. Two minor changes with respect to site work. In proposal number one, the site work is going to be minimal, and so I would suggest that it be, insert the word incidental, you're at the end of the first paragraph, so it says any incidental site work. The other word I was going to use is related in proposal two, thank you.
Just so you know, there is a second public comment, in which you can add the rest if you have it any further, just since you're unfamiliar. Thank you.
Oh, it's level. Because I can use them.
Anyone else have a public comment?
My name is Brian Cavanagh, I'm a resident of Hopewell Township. I just have a few quick questions, given on some of the presentations tonight. One, just to understand for the public, which gym is the auxiliary gym at Timberlake? Is that the gym the sixth graders have lunch on? Is that another gym? I'm just unfamiliar exactly what name goes to which gym. Appreciate the plans for Tollgate, having been a former Tollgate parent, and I realize that I've not been there in three years, but when I was there, CST was in the trailer. So with the elimination of the trailer, I appreciate that the staff will have new spaces, but I just want to make sure that CST has a room set aside for it in all of our planning, and I just want to make sure, because I can be, I understand that can be a detail that's quickly missed. And Mr. Colavita, I think- And Mr. Golavida, I think maybe the public's understanding of the word unhoused student might be different than the educational definition, and so I'd really appreciate that. The other thing I'll throw, just because you said you may be looking for other math programs to help out with students at the high school level. As some of you know, I used to be a high school teacher in Trenton. A program that I thought was amazing, and this was now 12, 15 years ago, was Carnegie Learning. The thing that amazed me at the time was how directed it was, and even when students, it could discern even at that time, so this is pre-AI, if a student was having a problem in a very specific subtype or a subpart of the question, to get, to drill down that as opposed to something like Khan Academy, which while free, just kind of repeats the same questions over and over again. So just some thoughts.
Any other? Okay. Seeing no other comments, would you like to pick on some of our questions and comments?
I will start with Mr. Kavanaugh's first. I'll work my way up. The auxiliary gym is the one with the climbing wall in it, if you are familiar with that, Mr. Kavanaugh. So it's the, it's the small one in the back that's got the climbing wall in it. Yes, we are considering CST space as we plan. That's one of the, one of the things that did come out when we were talking, getting feedback from the community, making sure that we have spaces where we can have private meetings, not just for the principal or parents, CST as well. And how students are meaning, are your student growth is happening so quickly that there's not enough room in your building, per the state's guidelines, to accommodate them all. But again, as Bob said, they just go in a big, like they're going into a big box measure and say you should be able to fit these many students. They don't care that that's a library, that's a calming room, that's a special needs room that could only have six kids in it. They just measure straight square footage, and it's, it's really antiquated. All of the school leaders complain about it, but this is what we have. They're still using old practices that go back to old buildings and how we use buildings back in the 50s. And the Carnegie Learning, thank you for the tip. We'll look into it. I mean, it's been years ago, but they may still be around and have evolved, but I do remember their system. It was a really great system. Mr. Nichols, thanks, thanks for your feedback. We did go back and forth with putting the number of students, but the number is less than 15, and we're concerned about kind of identifying students. But well, I'll bring that back to, like, people being able to identify when there's so few, right?
In some of the tables, they do actually note how many were tested. So like, it'll give percentages, but then it'll say 20, 25 tested, and then it'll say females, males, Hispanic. So you can look at that if you want to do a deeper dive.
Yes, but we will take the feedback about the flow chart. We're always, we played with this a few times to try to, to make it readable for the public, and that's great feedback. So thank you for that. Then going to Ms. Hamm. They report in each section where those students fall. So your student will fall, you know, if they're reporting a Rosetta, I'm in the black section, but if I have an IEP, I will also be, again, reported in that section. That's how they report it. The way they report this data from the state can be difficult. I don't have any data that students were feeling stressed about hearing that this is required to graduate. We've had, in the state of New Jersey, high school exit exams before. I'm sure when Mr. Nichols' daughters were here, they had it. I certainly had to teach for it when I taught high school, and it was always the expectation that students knew they needed to pass it to graduate. They could get all the credits, and if they didn't pass that high school exit exam, they weren't graduating. Yes, it was a portfolio, but we didn't want kids kind of defaulting to only just, oh, I'll just do the portfolio, because that is a lot of work, especially when students, a lot of students can pass. Now, the ones that can't, Mr. Nardal, I'm going to ask you to speak to that. We talk to those students, and we pull them aside, and they know upfront that, you know, do the best you can, and they work with those students that we know that that's not going to be their mechanism to graduate. Mr. Nardal, would you share a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so it's part of the IEP process. So we work with the IEP team that includes the student and the parent, and we talk through graduation requirements. And if we do have students who do have very involved challenges, you know, we can exempt them through an IEP, but those are very extreme cases. But we, there are many different avenues and ways to be able to show their strengths and their competencies. So that's, that's what we work with.
And then the final piece was about the daylight savings time. The state does give us a window, but we need to pay a little bit more attention to that. So we'll take that feedback also back as we're selecting dates for everyone to take the test. We're trying to fit within windows and multiple tests going at the same time, but we can work through that and make sure that we were cognizant of that on the next test.
Anything from the board? Okay. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Would like to ask, we have any old business? Oh, sorry. Now we must vote. Okay, well, it's, do we need first and second? First and second to move the two questions referendum?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Capadia?
Yes.
Dr. Liliston?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Dr. Stilianu?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Sorry. Now, any old business items? Seeing none. I need a first and second to move the consent agenda items.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, consent agenda items passed. We'll move on to all of our committee updates, starting with finance.
I guess I'll give that update since I took notes today and Mark was not able to attend it. Just give me one second so I can actually pull up my notes. There we go. All right. So we held a finance and facilities committee meeting this morning. Three items to discuss. First is the usual one, our facilities update. There's a boiler room renovation that's going on at the high school, speaking of projects that could not wait for the referendum. So the boilers are in, that's the good news. The bad news is they had to open up the roof in order to, I guess, put the vents in, and when they opened the roof up, they realized that the whole substructure was shut. So we now have an open roof, and I need to do more work there than we were planning on because we need to.
Open ceiling, not open roof.
Open ceiling. I actually thought the roof was open. Okay. Thank you, Bob. But we do need to shore up that substructure so that we don't have an open roof when we're not expecting one.
It's important to note about this project, too, that it was funded 40% by the state through a grant. That's why it was removed from the referendum. And in addition, while there is this ceiling work will be a change order, the project bid came in under the cost estimate, so we're still within the original cost estimate on this project.
And then the only other issue, and I guess that's the good news, is that the report was short. The only other issue to bring up is we have alarm panels at several schools, including Tollgate, TMS, and I think Bear Tavern was the third one, where all three panels are not in a great state, and they're obsolete. So the systems are okay, but the control panels are no longer being manufactured. So if they go down, we're not going to be able to replace, to replace them. So the facilities folks are proposing to, to do, to proactively replace them for modern, yeah, the panels, not the alarm system, just the panels, for modern ones that can be maintained. And it's not that these are that old, but it's just the way things are being done now. They go end of life in way less time than they should be, and then the manufacturers just refuse to support them at that point. So that's all on the facility side. We had a discussion around the community room, the community use of high school facilities, and it's primarily the PAC, although the discussion was wider, right? We have a number of community groups that would like to use the PAC facilities, and it's, it's been a challenge for the district. In previous times, when we've had a fairly liberal policy, we've noticed that when outside groups come in, they, there is significant wear and tear on this stuff. And there is also a, the issue of the teacher that supervises the students that operate all the equipment really getting overworked. He's already running a large number of events, the school events after the regular school hours, and at some point, it's not that he's doing it for free, but at some point, everybody reaches a point and says, yeah, it's not worth the money. On the flip side, we do want to find a way to be open to the community in a reasonable way. So we've asked the administration to do two things. One is, given our financial situation, we can no longer be eating any costs. We were sort of charging for the time of, of the folks we were paying, but we were not charging for any other costs. There are significant costs around wear and tear, additional air conditioning, use, all kinds of other costs. So the administration is going to come up with what it really costs us, and that's what we need to be charging going forward. I think the committee was pretty unanimous in saying if we're asking the community for 80-plus million dollars, we, that we need to be doing this for folks who want to use our facilities. And then we've also asked them to look into some ways to continue offering, making the space available, but in a controlled fashion, in a way that respects the time of the faculty and the students who are, who are helping run all of these events. So I know that Bob and Tom and Principal Riley will come back, I guess, in a couple of meeting cycles with what their thoughts are there. And then we just had a final discussion on the proposed referendum. There was some fine tuning of the questions that we just voted in. And that was about it. Questions, comments?
Okay. Seeing none, we will go ahead and proceed to Personnel.
All right. Good evening. A few quick updates. We met for Personnel as always before this meeting this evening. Would like to start with a shout out to our leadership team, our admins, our principals, who have been doing an incredible job this summer and into early, what would that have been, May, June, with the hiring process. As many of us know, there are many schools across the state of New Jersey that are struggling with major shortages, and I'm very proud to share that our team is almost done with all of their hires with still a few weeks to go. And I hope you guys feel quite proud. That's an incredible accomplishment. And as a mom with kids, it's always nice to know that, like, okay, staff are there and they're ready, because those kids are going to come in rearing with energy. So thank you very much for all of the work that you've done there. We did have, as always, some additional retirements that have been submitted. I do just want to take a moment to do a special thank you for Marie Del Grande, who is our secretary over at TMS. She has, she will be staying with us for the rest of the calendar year, so his, her retirement is effective January 1st, but she has been with the district for 23 years. I know many individuals who have worked with her across that time and has heard about how effective and excellent she has been for all 23 years. And so a very special thank you to Ms. Del Grande. One other, just quick update for the board. Next board meeting, we will be bringing the evaluation rubrics to the board to review and approve. Right now, there is conversation in 2027, the state is going to put forward new regulations. And so right now, we're looking at, does it make sense to make any changes now, or do we want to wait until 2027 and do it all together? So again, we will be bringing that to the board next month. And so if anyone has questions or concerns, certainly reach out to Personnel or to Ms. Smith, who can answer those. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, we need a first and second to pass.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote?
Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Dr. Stilianu?
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Capadia?
Yes.
Dr. Liliston?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams Galliano?
Okay, moving on to Ed Tom.
Okay, so we met on Thursday, and anyone who was also present, please jump in. And so Ms. Lois Baldwin, who is the supervisor of rural language business and ML, multilingual language learners, presented the ACCESS 2025 presentation, which provides an overview of the access for ELL assessments, a state mandated, a state mandated tool used in New Jersey to measure the English language proficiency of multilanguage learners, or MLs, across four domains, including speaking, listening, reading, and writing. It's administered online with, and there are certain writing components in grades one and three, and the assessment is required for all MLs, including those who have declined services. Students scoring a four and a half or higher on the sixth level scale meet the state's exit criteria, or they are, those below remain in the program. The district currently serves MLs speaking 14 different languages, representing 1.4% of the student population, with literacy in the native language, often supporting quicker program exit. ACCESS data is used to guide instructional planning, inform course placement, and communicate service continuation or exit of the families. I also, we went through the NJGPA achievement report, which we saw today, and we talked about some of the data and some of the presentation, things we wanted to highlight. And then finally, we discussed a ban field trip proposal. This was a proposal for a winter ban trip to Disney. However, there wasn't specific breakdown of numbers and who was responsible for the costs, so the board requested additional breakdown of information, and so hopefully we'll have that in September to review again.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to Community Relations, and Mr. Capadia's going to cover.
I will be giving a brief report out in place of Mr. Slotman. So at the Community Relations meeting, which we had today in the morning, we debriefed the recent referendum communications that we had. We, I had personally published an editorial in Hopewell Express. Dr. Resnick had also published an editorial both in Mercer Me and Hopewell Express, addressing some of the myths and misinformation regarding per pupil spending and central administration costs. I had talked about my personal perspective as a former student and now board member, talking about the incredible quality of our education that we have here in Hopewell. I do think the two pieces really complemented each other. Speaking with community members, we've heard some really positive feedback from those two articles, so that's been really exciting to hear, and I'm glad that we could, we could work on that through the Community Relations Committee. We also talked about how we can strengthen our collaboration with our Communications Parents Committee to make sure that we're, you know, we have consistent messaging and that we're making sure that all of the information that we're putting out is correct and up to date and based in the real statistics that we have here. And we do have a meeting with that committee scheduled for next week, and I believe it's going to be monthly moving forward. So that's been pretty good for engaging with folks outside of just the people around this table. We also talked about the ballot question language. I think last year, we had heard some feedback from folks that the language was a bit long, and it was difficult for some folks to understand. I think the language we voted on today was really clear, and it really breaks things down in an understandable way. So that's exciting, and I think we're, we're happy to be proactive in preempting any confusion, confusion that's related to the language, and I think we're avoiding any unnecessary controversy. questions that, that folks might have. Um, and lastly, I also want to give credit to Dr. Trese and Board President Williams Galliano, who had already begun, uh, engagement with some of our senior citizen centers. Um, but we just talked about that again, how, you know, stressing the importance that, uh, older residents in our district make up a significant portion of our voting block, especially in an, in an off-year election that we have this year. Um, so, you know, we, we want to make sure that we're reaching out directly to folks that really do come out and vote and have strong opinions about our schools and making sure that they have access to correct, up-to-date information and are not falling victim to some of the misinformation that we're seeing online.
Thank you. Um, any questions or comments from the rest of the board?
Um, I just wanted to make a comment. I think I'm just really grateful for the proactive strategy that we're really taking this time to get information out to the community. You know, it seems that some of the questions that are coming to us are from folks who haven't been at board member meetings, haven't engaged over email or asked any of these questions directly. So I just want to remind folks that you're always welcome to reach out to us. Please do come to the board meetings to ask these questions. Please do come to the building tours so that you can see the challenges that we're facing right now. Um, I think we're always willing to have that dialogue.
Absolutely. We do, do invite, um, everyone to engage and it's better to clear the questions with us than to try to rely on anything coming through social media, for sure.
Yeah, I, I do actually, I just want to add on to that and, and I do really want to reiterate what Dr. Liliston just said. You know, I, I do understand that there is, you know, a lot of pressure. There's the cameras and the microphones to ask a question publicly, um, but we can't engage on social media. You know, if someone writes a negative comment on a Facebook post, we are not able to respond as much as we really want to sometimes. Um, so I really encourage you to, to send us an email so, you know, you can reach out directly that all of our emails are publicly available. Um, and I, yeah, I, I understand and can recognize people have busy schedules, to come to a meeting is difficult, but, you know, there, I, I wish we could respond to you directly on social media, but we can't. So I don't want that to seem like we're not being transparent or we're not willing to engage. It's just that that's the rules we have to follow.
Absolutely. Okay. Seeing, you ready? S D L?
We did not make this one.
Okay, got it.
Quick, um, meeting for Government Relations this month. Uh, we just debriefed some of our past, uh, work, specifically our meeting with County Executive Benson, uh, to talk about potential cross-district collaboration, uh, to address school level segregation in Mercer County. Um, we really just wanted to talk, touch base with Dr. Wilson and, and just get everyone on the same page again, um, to make sure that, you know, we're moving towards, um, some, some proactive integration and, and desegregation initiatives between school districts in, in the county. Uh, we reached out to some nonprofits in the area where we think we could potentially facilitate some countywide programming, um, some potential trainings for our students, some, some joint leadership trainings, um, for high school students across the districts. Um, but everything's kind of, you know, in the early stages and it was more of just touching base to make sure we're all on the same page regarding our recent meetings. Uh, and moving forward, we're just going to continue, uh, coordinating some of those efforts and, and pushing the initiative forward as we enter the, uh, 2025 to 2026 academic year.
Any questions? I won't say anything about us flying through the meeting, guys. Okay, um, there is climate action on the agenda, but that is, um, like a carryover.
That got on there. We were supposed to have a climate action report this month, but we pushed it off until September.
I can give just a brief update. Um, we did have our kickoff, uh, here about a week ago, uh, for our acceptance of the climate grant that we received from the, um, from the state, um, that will be funding some outdoor learning gardens for the students and curriculum development around climate change. So that'll be interesting and also the gardens. So they'll be talking about that more in depth next month, but we did have our kickoff. We're very excited about the work that we're going to be doing with the watershed and some other organizations that are, um, going to help us put natural habitats into the, to these gardens, um, with native plants. So we're excited about that.
Awesome. Okay, moving on, Dr. Liliston, to policy.
Thank you. So the Policy Committee met on July 30th. We had, um, Principal Riley join our meeting from the high school, um, and we reviewed five policies and one regulation that are up for first reading today. Uh, so can I have a motion in a second to bring policy 5460, High School Graduation, 5339.01, Student Sun Protection, 3216, Dress and Grooming, 4216, Dress and Grooming for Support Staff, and then Policy and Regulations 9150, School Visitors, up for first read.
First.
Second.
Okay, excellent. So first up, we have policy 5460, High School Graduation. So this lays out the graduation requirements that our students in the district have to meet in order to graduate from the high school. The policy was last revised in October 2017, and we're bringing forward, uh, a couple notable revisions here. So this policy does include a new graduation requirement. So this is required under state law and the requirement states that the board needs to require a student and the student's parents, if applicable, to complete the financial aid application for college. So this is called the FAFSA. Folks might be familiar with that, as a prerequisite in order to receive a high school diploma. Um, the school did implement this requirement last year and also had a waiver process for those who did not want to submit the FAFSA. Ms. Riley did provide a report out on that and said that there was no problems with implementation of this requirement and that she also made herself available last year to provide assistance to students and parents who wanted to submit the FAFSA, but maybe were experiencing some challenges completing it. The second revision that we have here is a new requirement that students complete 2.5 credits of coursework that promotes either service learning or cultural competence. Uh, we felt this requirement was important to really help advance the mission statement of the district, which really, sorry, excuse me, which really prioritizes giving students the skills they need to positively impact the global community. Um, so there's no cost implications for this requirement here, um, as there won't be curriculum development costs. We already have a number of courses that adequately, uh, meet this requirement for students. Um, Ms. Riley also shared that about 60 to 70% of students are currently already fulfilling this requirement and that students can fill this through a summer elective as well if necessary. I think the committee did have some conversation recognizing that cultural competence and service learning really are two different concepts, but there was some concern that creating two separate requirements could pose scheduling challenges, particularly for students who might be specializing in advanced math, for example, or science or performing arts. So for now, we are proposing one requirement, um, that could be either service learning or cultural competence with the idea that we'll review this in a couple of years to determine the feasibility of potentially separating this out. And then the last thing I'll note is on then page 13, there's an option related to payment for the state seal of bi-literacy for proficiency in a foreign language. Um, the school does cover the costs related to the assessments required for students to obtain this. I'll stop there and see if any Policy Committee members have anything to add.
Just quickly, I want to say that this would go into effect after, once this passed, if, um, if we, if you accept the revisions, the 2029 school, uh, students would be the ones that would need to do this. And some examples of service learning classes could be AP Spanish has a service component, environmental science, community-based creative design is one that's based in service learning and maker spacing. Global Public Service is a class, introduction to service learning, and there'll probably, I'm sure, be other courses that will be created. For cultural competency, anthropology, bioethics, comparative world religions, global issues and awareness, Holocaust genocide studies, race class, uh, gender, um, African-American studies is another one, sociology. So these are courses that we already have that would, that would fit the, um, the requirement, and I'm sure other courses will come along, um, in the years to come.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I, I just wanted to, to specifically talk about the cultural competency piece. Firstly, I want to give, uh, my props to Principal Riley, who initiated this conversation with us when, when we met, uh, earlier, uh, last month. Um, but I also want to say, uh, back in June 2020, when, uh, Black Lives Matter protests and anti-racist efforts in our schools were, were really being talked about, um, I had at the time as a student activist, led a petition and initiative to have our district adopt three, uh, anti-racist measures to enact in our, in our schools. And one of those was this exact graduation requirement, um, a half-year cultural competency graduation requirement, not to add new classes, but just to have, um, you know, a, a, a graduation requirement for high school students to be able to take some of the incredible classes that we already offer in our district. Um, so I do really want to reiterate, uh, the classes that Dr. Trese just listed have existed in our district for some of them over like decades. Um, and what's sad to me is, is I, having taken some of these classes, because we don't, you know, kind of nudge students in that direction, a lot of these classes don't run, uh, because they are under-enrolled. And so I think this is going to be a really great opportunity for our students to, to learn a different perspective, to engage in different topics and ideas that they maybe wouldn't have if they didn't have the graduation requirement. Um, and I also want to stress that we, we have other state mandated requirements. We make our students take financial literacy through personal finance, a visual art requirement, um, a practical art requirement. So, you know, we, we already have a lot of half-year and full-year graduation requirements, and this additional half-year centered around cultural competence, cultural competency will go a very long way in, in ensuring that our schools, um, you know, offer that, that cultural literacy that is so needed in our world and our, in our ecosystem today. Um, and, and I think what's so beautiful about this is that we're giving students the opportunity to engage with so many different topics, you know, whether they're interested in environmental science or anti-racism or sociology, whatever it may be. Um, it, it, it's really a great initiative and I'm, I'm glad to see something that I had talked about five years ago being now voted on by the board. And it's not just me talking about it, it's everyone, you know, in solidarity, uh, supporting this initiative and it's really for the benefit of our students and our community as a whole.
So can I make my comment now since we opened up the topic? So, so on this specific policy and this specific issue, I am concerned about the language as it's written now. Um, and let me just put that into context. I've pushed and I've supported for us to do things that expose our kids to their peers that have a different life experience, whether that be local or international, I think both is important. I'm also a supporter of service learning, so that's not where it is, but the key word to me here is expose as opposed to impose a particular point of view, a particular, um, way of thinking about the issues. The language of intercultural sensitivity is very broad and can potentially include things that I would not be comfortable being included now. When I look at the current classes, I'm not concerned about that, right? But we're writing a policy for the future. And so before I can vote on this, and I'll be voting abstaining on this particular one, uh, for today, I'd like to ask the Policy Committee to go back and, uh, provide more detail on what exactly we have in mind when we talk about intercultural sensitivity. If we're talking about, um, means for, to expose students to, um, again, to the world where people have different lived experiences, different points of view, that's great. That is exactly what I'm looking for. But if we start talking about particular social theories, um, then I think we need to be very careful. Um, and I, for one, would then, uh, be examining what we're trying to do much more carefully and probably want to do it on a course-by-course basis as opposed to with a broad policy scope.
Just a clarification here, and I think Dr. Trese illustrated this with her, her course list. Students aren't being required to take one particular course, right? So there's this list of courses that meet this requirement and they're required to take 2.5 credits from that list. So there's not a specific course that this is saying students have to take this one course. There's many, many that were identified by Ms. Riley that already exist and have existed for a number of years, and we're asking them to take 2.5 credits in one of those courses. Does that, does that align with what you're thinking?
It makes sense, but nonetheless, I'd like to have clarity in the policy about what we mean by intercultural sensitivity.
Okay, we could do that. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. So next up, we have policy 5339.01. This is called Student Sun Protection. Uh, so the background here is a state law was passed in March 25, which requires boards of education to adopt a policy regarding student sun protection. Uh, this is a new policy for our district. It affirms that our district believes it's important for students to protect themselves against sun-related diseases and that students aren't required to produce a doctor's note to use sunscreen or protective clothing. Um, we have a couple of different options with this policy, so I'll just highlight those briefly. So we're giving an option here to select that students need written permission for parents to carry, uh, from their parents, excuse me, to carry sunscreen. We're recommending that we not include this option just to allow for more flexibility in implementation and to lessen the administrative barrier to students actually carrying and using sunscreen. Um, there is a second option, however, that we are recommending, which is that the principal can restrict the type of sunscreen that a student can bring in, in case there are concerns, for example, about aerosol sunscreens affecting students who might have asthma or other respiratory illnesses that this could put them at risk if it's right near them. I'll stop there and see if there's any comments or additions from the Policy Committee and any questions from the board, concerned? Okay. So the next two policies we'll go through together. So this is policy 3216 and 4216, Dress and Grooming. They mirror each other. One is for teaching staff, one is for support staff. These are dress code policies for teachers and staff who are employed by the district. These are new policies for our district. They lay out expectations around what's considered professional dress within the context of our school district, um, with a waiver process built in related to, um, performance of specific sort of ad hoc duties that might require jeans, for example. For example, if you're, oh, sorry, jeans are in there, but it may, may require dressing down. So if a teacher's going out and planting plants with students or health and wellness, um, there may be an option to, to receive an exemption from the dress code in that case. Um, we've also made it clear in the policy that the board does affirm the right of staff to wear culturally significant attire, um, and these policies have been run by the unions as representatives of our teachers and support staff. Anything to add here or questions or comments from the board?
I'm grateful to the rest of the Policy Committee for adding in the language, ensuring that folks can, uh, wear culturally, uh, appropriate attire and to make sure that we have that language written in.
Okay. And then the last ones up are just one quick revision to these. So we have Policy and Regulation 9150, which pertains to school visitors. Um, so this really lays out the rules related to permission and registration of school visitors, their conduct while on school grounds, and then the amount of time that they can visit the school. Um, it limits visits to 60 minutes or one class period, once per marking period to minimize any disturbances to the classroom. Uh, the Policy and Regulation were both last revised in 2019. Um, so really the only revision here is that we've updated the Policy and Regulation to allow for either the principal or a designee to have jurisdiction over visitors to the school. So previously it was just the principal. Um, we believe this will allow for more flexibility around implementation of this policy. Any questions or concerns related to the school visitor policy? Okay, so all in favor say aye. Any opposed or abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay. So we'll move on to second reading here. So can I have a motion a second to bring Policy and Regulation 7441, Electronic Surveillance in The policy and regulation were both last revised in 2019. So really, the only revision here is that we've updated the policy and regulation to allow for either the principal or a designee to have jurisdiction over visitors to the school. So previously, it was just the principal. We believe this will allow for more flexibility around implementation of this policy. Any questions or concerns related to the school visitor policy? Okay. So all in favor, say aye? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay.
Abstain.
So we'll move on to second reading here. So can I have a motion a second to bring Policy and Regulation 7441, Electronic Surveillance in School Buildings and on School Grounds? And Policy and Regulation 5533, Student Smoking, for second reading?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. So we reviewed these policies in detail during the July meeting, so I won't go over them again. We did not receive any specific edits to these policies, so they remain with the revisions that we had during first reading. So I'll just ask, before we move into a vote, are there any additional comments, questions, or clarifications about these? Okay. Bob, I think it's a roll call vote.
Dr. Stiliano.
Yes.
Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Capadia?
Yes.
Dr. Lilston?
Yes.
Dr. Resnick?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Okay, wonderful. I need to... I need a first and second for the calendars for September? August and September?
Second.
Personnel, standard time, September 15, 6 o'clock. And I was going to suggest finance facilities on the 8th. Same time, 8 o'clock, 4:30, either one. Like 8, 8:30? Neither? Vicki?
Sure. If mornings work, do you want to do 8 or 8:30 on the 10th, Wednesday? Do you guys have a preference? 8, 8, okay.
Okay. Policy? What time was that? Okay. We may as well hit you up for government relations, too. Is that, are you going to be good on that day? Because that's the first day of school. Second day may be better. Collette?
September 10th at 8:00 a.m.?
Latency, you said? Do we have any crossover? No crossover? Latency, they, uh... Then Communications John's not here, but... Get back on that one? Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Awesome. Calendars pass?
Before we move on from the calendars, a quick question. The next board meeting, that's on the 15th of September, right?
Correct.
That's going to be at the high school, and we're going to be doing a walkthrough. A walkthrough, okay?
Okay, any new business item? All right, seeing none. We will move on to our second public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Ed will, may, may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. Public comment is now open.
Sylvia Kosis, in Wydell Drive, 7 Wydell Drive in Pennington, New Jersey. I totally forgot that I wanted to bring this up tonight, but our country's going to be celebrating our 250th anniversary. And so my question is, how is the district planning on doing things in the school, in the community, and to really emphasize the incredibility, incredibleness of this 250th birthday? We have triumphs in our history, we have tragedies. We need to recognize both, but we've lasted 250 years. And some of us won't be around for the 300th. Mr. Colavita, maybe?
Wait, wait, yeah, but he was around for the 200th, so...
So... Just going off a previous joke. And second reason I would stress that the, you know, the district really consider planning for this with tangible things is we're at a critical period in our country where we need to emphasize greater civic knowledge and strategies to help our students improve civil discourse. So this anniversary year would be a great opportunity to capitalize on that and to work with other organizations, the Municipal Alliance and other groups that are in the area, to let our kids know that we have a great country that they can be happy and proud to live in. And we really want to make sure that this is a good celebration for them. Thank you.
Kate Hamm. I just wanted to follow up on my comments before about the NJGPA and the comments about the anxiety and stress of students. And Dr. Treese, your response was that you hadn't received any complaints, any notification, or anything from parents. And I just want to say, just because you didn't receive them doesn't mean that they weren't out there and that they didn't exist. There were plenty of social media platforms, and it was brought to the principal's attention. So there were a number of concerns that parents and students did have that may not have hit this building for one reason or the other. I did want to thank you, Dr. Resnick, for bringing up the next board meeting. I was going to ask, that was one of my questions about, so I'm guessing that it's a 5:30 walkthrough and a 6:30 board meeting time? Just looking for confirmation of that. And then the last thing about this proposed new requirement, I want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. It's not a state requirement, it's a Hopewell requirement that's being implemented. And I'm hoping that there's careful consideration taken in with this requirement so that some of our students or groups of students do not become the focal point and the burden of what others are now going to be taking on. I know that there are, have been some instances where students are the representative of teaching other students or teaching even staff. And I hope that that's not something that gets placed upon our students for one of these requirements. I know a lot of those classes don't run because there are not enough students, or I've seen in the program of studies that they run like every other year, which could complicate scheduling. And then I guess I'm also wondering if there is ultimately a consideration as it applies to our students with special needs. Thank you.
Well, since I stayed here for this far into the being, I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. Ray Nichols, Hopewell Township. First of all, I'm distressed that the township in which I live instituted a pilot's program and is now not coming forth with a fair appropriation to the school board. Which brings me to question, bond question number two. What happens if bond question one is approved? The way the explanatory material is written, it assumes that bond question number two will then also pass. But in fact, it's not necessarily true. And it's almost, it's going to be interesting because I'm assuming, well, Bear Tavern's going to get twice as much money as Tollgate, for a number of reasons. But part of that is due to the increase in the school population distributed primarily in the township rather than in either the boroughs or both boroughs. And I could see bond question number two going down while bond question number one is approved. And it's because of the lumping together of improvements at Tollgate and improvements at Bear Tavern and the fact that supposedly that 16 million coming from the township will cover the cost of the construction. And also, my question would be, is that 16, whatever the township eventually agrees to provide to the school district, will that be distributed over 20 years? Or is that all supposed to be a lump sum coming forth in the first year? Thank you.
I'm asking questions up here. Hi, you all know me, Seth Sodiskey, Pennington Harborsen Road in Hopewell Township. Couple things that I just, that I think kind of got maybe glossed over or that I would just want to bring up for the sake of everybody. It looks like we approved school lunch costs. And I'm curious if there was a percent increase year over year from how much school lunches cost for everybody? And then, just a clarification on this new, it sounds like we're going to start working on a new cost list for using the facilities, the buildings. And so are things like the, like the Children's Theater that just had their performances at the PACC, examples of where they would be looking at cost increases for using the building or that kind of thing? And then, is there already a cost, you know, a set? You know, what is, what is the differentiation for what those lists are going to be looked at as we put them together? So, that was all.
Okay, it's like we've covered everybody this second round.
Okay, I'm going to start with the first question of the 250-year anniversary. Yes, we've been planning since last fall. Darren Loon, our K-12 supervisor, former K-12 supervisor of Social Studies, and he was now going to be secondary. But he's been planning with local historians and organizations in the community since last fall for the 250th anniversary. So we have lots of things in the works for the students, all grade levels and things, guests, speakers coming in, curriculum that they're going to be bringing to the kids. So we have been working on that, we're very excited about that.
And I was just going to say really quick, I'd love to the comment about the 250 years. And correct me if I'm wrong, but then we also have two elementary schools reaching 100 years.
Well, two elementary schools will have their 100-year anniversaries. This building is 100 years, you're sitting in here. We won't have a celebration here. But, okay. And Hopewell Elementary will be celebrating as well, thank you for that.
That'd be a big year.
Mm-hmm, very exciting. And then Bob is turning 300, so... So again, Mrs. Hamm, I'm going to follow up with the principal because again, I hadn't heard anything about any anxiety, but I will check with her about that and make sure that our, how we're communicating to kids is sensitive to that. Again, students who have special needs, they shouldn't be put in that pressure anyway because many of them, that's not going to be their vehicle for graduation. And Mr. Nardo works closely with families and students to make sure that that is communicated and we work through that. Unfortunately, most of our students have to sit for the exam. That's something I don't agree with with the state. They have to be severely communication impaired for them to exempt them from the test and not put them through that. But they do have to sit. So we do our best to try to alleviate the stress on that. We talked, you talked about the course and kind of having, singling out a student to represent the whole group of students or the whole, their whole ethnic group. I was put in that position as a kid, I don't appreciate it. We train our teachers very carefully on that. They should never be singling out a kid to teach the class or teach other students. We do have students that volunteer to do that, but that's up to them. We shouldn't expect our students to teach the curriculum. We want our teachers to do that. The board meeting will be at the high school. The tour will start at 5:30, followed by the board meeting at 6:30. For those of you who walking is difficult and you, and you don't, you're not able to navigate a building as big as a high school or any of our buildings, our principals have worked over the summer making little mini videos and mini tours that we will post on the website for you because it is a lot to traverse our buildings, to walk them. So if you can't make that, know that there will be virtual opportunities that we will be posting on our Facebook account. Hopefully, members of our community will repost that on the other sites where we don't, the other Facebook accounts that we don't post to. And then we'll also have it on our district referendum website. Did I miss anything else? I felt like it was one that I missed for Ms. Hamm. Okay? If I, if I forgot something, please let me know. Mr. Nichols, a pilot program. Bob, I think that you, you wrote down some of that. Do you want to respond to some of his questions? First, the first question may pass and the second one may not. And if that happens, then that means that the additions will not be built for Bear Tavern or Tollgate. That is not something I want. But one can pass without two, two cannot pass without number one. And the question was, will they give us that in one lump sum or will they distribute that over time?
I, we haven't discussed the final number? Or we, we haven't gotten to a final resolution? My guess is it's going to come in annual payments over 20 years.
One other point, you know, because there's an undertone there that says, well, what if question number two doesn't pass and then the township actually gives us the money? Funny enough, we've looked at various ways by which the township can give us the money because they can't just give us the money. And short of us passing the referendum and then them helping us retire that debt, we really, we really haven't been able to find one that is tried and tested. There's one other one which is sort of in place but has never been done and the regulations have not been written. So if question two doesn't pass, then we're not building either one of the additions.
And just as a follow-up, if that were the case, right, and the referendum does not pass for number two, so we cannot do extension on Bear Tavern, even if the township were to give money, and there is continued growth from the new communities, as we would expect, will we be potentially looking at redistricting across all four elementary schools?
As best we can, right? I mean, right now, we've already redistricted portions of the new developments over to Stony Brook, and we already, Tollgate is already hitting the wall in a grade level where we're probably going to have to close enrollment and send them to Stony Brook. So it's just, we can't send them all the way across town to Hopewell Elementary, but we may have to do sections of redistricting. That is definitely a risk, class size going up more than it already is, is definitely a risk. It's not a good thing. So that's not what I'm hoping for this district. But one can pass and two cannot, and that is a risk.
You could also, I mean, it's, it's not the best situation, but you could add more modern trailers to the back of Bear Tavern. Other districts have done that in, in, in waiting for a referendum to pass or a referendum wouldn't pass in a...
With what money, Bob?
You could have to take it out of capital reserve, and it's not the best way to use capital reserve. But, I mean, if you don't have the space, you're going to have to find something to do.
Yeah, I will...
Rent space.
I will say this in my personal opinion, but somewhat educated opinion. If question two doesn't pass, bigger class sizes is not a risk, it's a certainty. Across all four schools. Because we will not have schools, some of the elementary schools with much bigger class sizes than some others, right? So it's a certainty across all four schools.
And then we have the questions about the school...
to manage an event, like the Children's Theater, like dance recitals, like music recitals, things like that. Those are the things that we're, we're struggling with, how to make balance.
Yeah, and, and I just want to put this in a perspective. If you look at what we've done in other areas where we've previously subsidized things that the community really wanted, and this year, we started charging at cost, right? We're not making a profit in any of these things, but...
I, e-buss.
Courtesy bussing, right? The majority of parents in Pennington Borough with kids in Timberlane or the high school are paying about $1,000 per child if they want to take advantage of courtesy bussing. Extra curricular activities, they were raised to a point where they cover the cost of paying the staff member for the extra regular activities, right? It's, it's just part of that, and the reason we're doing it is because we have a finite pot of money. So if we continue to subsidize, where's that money gonna come from? The only place left is staff salaries for regular instruction, meaning we have less money to pay teachers, meaning less, right? And so, given that trade-off, I think we're continually leaning into, let's just charge folks what it costs, right? And in some cases, it may be unpleasant, but that's the state that the district is in now. If the state changes the way both local communities are allowed to fund districts and the way they support local communities, then I think I, for one, will be very supportive to, in, in a move to revisit all of this once again and say, can we go back to, to where we, either not charging or charging less in a way where we're spending some money to support our community, but we just can't right now.
I, I want to also clarify, when we say at cost, when you look over time, we'd say general, general things like wear and tear. For the community, what that could look like is we have, you know, audiovisual technical equipment in places, and we have to bring in someone who can manage that technical equipment. It can't be just casually used by the general population. So we had a past history of having them bring their own resources in to do that, and that's caused damage to the equipment. So we've learned that lesson, we bring our people in, but that means the same folks that we use for all of our, all of our school district events in the PAC and other spaces are overtaxed if we're not careful. The other thing that I think is a really specific example of additional costs are when you have multiple rooms within a building being used, people bring in food and drinks and not just spillage and things, but then you worry about, if you miss the spill, you could have ants and other rodents and things coming in. So there's, there is an impact that we have experienced, and we've kind of just taken it along with the relationship that we feel strongly about supporting, but the impact of those costs are adding up. So I just want to be more specific about the general terms that we're using and give examples of where the cost has impacted the district and/or where resources are strained because we have a limited number of those resources for day-to-day district use.
The other thing I'll just quickly add is, I think we also maybe briefly touched on when we discussed this as a board, wanting there to be kind of equity and transparency in this process, so it doesn't start to feel like, oh, well, this group gets to use the space because, I don't know, they know someone in this community group who didn't get to use the space, right? So this way, it's fair, anyone who uses the space, this is the expectation, and, and it's kind of equal access then to all community groups.
Yeah. Any other comments about that? Appreciate that question. Okay, well, we'll keep you posted as recommendations are brought to the board for moving us forward in that regard. And I think with that, we will close our public comment, and also, I would like a first and second to move on to executive session, in which we will take no action, but we'll be discussing special ed legal matter.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, we'll be in executive session. Thank you, community members, for being with us, and we'll look forward to seeing you at the high school next month.